I'll start the meeting. I'm gonna tap the hammer, although it scares my heart.
Is it better?
Just don't do it.
We call the meeting to order today. And please pledge your allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
No, no.
Somebody should take that up.
So we gotta start with the pledge of, excuse me, with the approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. It's court. Any discussion? And that is a voice vote. Approval?
All in favor of approval?
All in favor of approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda has been approved. Onto the consent agenda.
I'm up for the approval of the consent agenda for November twenty five, twenty twenty five.
Broke it. Won't work no second.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, it's so hard.
I don't know.
Just pull the ground out of your area.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of just corrections on the minutes from the last meeting. Now I have to find them.
Oh, who's probably saying that?
There was one motion, the West Colby Promenade, Scott was not absent.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, just the template.
Thank you.
And then with the adjournment.
Oh, geez, Brenda. Thank you guys.
To be married.
Yeah. That's what you had.
Well, the first one was, I didn't want, if somebody looked at this stuff, you know, a year from now, I didn't wanna get it. It was a vote.
You failed out early.
But you made the motion, so it's kinda...
Yeah, you have your voice.
I wanted to be sure that that one got taken care of. I have two questions if you're done.
I'm finished, thank you.
Both on the accounts payable. Page three of five and the first part of it, Prine and Newhoff, engineering fees on Phase Three of Tanner, they development.
So they, all the hookups to utilities have to be supervised and quality checked? Who does it?
As I said, I don't understand why we have to pay anybody to do anything when they're the ones that are...
I don't know what that is. But it's our utilities going in, so we have to make sure that they're assembled correctly?
Okay. I just, I just didn't understand why we were paying engineering fees for something for, you know, Tanner to pay.
Sure.
The other question is, the training for Travis Bowles?
Yeah.
Is it related at all to the school? His job as the school rep?
It was actually funded from a DHS grant. The funding was from, was it federal or state?
I think it was federal, yeah. So the training itself was paid for, we had to pay for the hotel, so.
I just, you know, if it was related to the school, I thought we had an agreement with the school that they were supposed to pay half of everything that it cost for him to be the school officer, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
It's training that would be good for every one of our officers, but it just gives everyone...
So it's not just something that was specific to just being the school officer?
No, there's an adolescent portion to it, but...
Okay. That's all I have.
I have a question on page three of six, and again, it's Prine and Newhoff. And we've got $23,000 of their fees towards the pocket park. Has that already been accounted for in the numbers that we've gotten?
Yeah, there's an aging, like, when they give us a bill now, kind of since I got here to ask questions, they give us an aging amount for each project, so it's not just a random bill, and I don't know how much total it was. It, they don't say the budgeted amount, and then the aging amount, how much we've been charged for that particular project before I sign off on it.
So it probably was in the numbers that you gave us?
Yeah.
Before?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? And for, have a voice vote for approval of the consent agenda? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. And we move on now to messages from the mayor, council, and city manager. You wanna go first there, Chief?
I mean, I mean you. Dan?
Actually, no, I, Chief is good to go.
Okay, I'm just gonna give a little summary of our activity over the last two and a half weeks, just to highlight a few of the things that have gone on here. November seventh, Officer Kevin Numidor responded to assist a commu on officer involved shooting at the Comfort Inn. I'm sure you guys all heard about that. We did have contact with the officers that were there, really commended his actions to be, be there very quickly, and immediately started performing first aid, including wound packing, packing against and tourniquet care on that patient. The officers, deputies that were out there were very appreciative of our quick response and his assistance on that call. November fourteenth, we conducted a citywide rubbish and junk vehicle ordinance violation check, a total of 22 addresses, address locations were involved, with several of those locations having multiple violations. Owners, homeowners have already taken corrective action at many of these sites. On the twentieth of this month, Detective Parsons assisted the Department of Homeland Security with a search warrant here in the city regarding child sexually abusive material that was being trafficked across several states. Federal charges are pending on that involved offender. In addition to that, Detective Parsons worked some related cases involving exploitation of a vulnerable adult. It's a very challenging case, it's still ongoing, involves a in-home care provider possibly stealing and exploiting this vulnerable adult.
On those violations, the first things you spoke about, how long do they have to cure those?
Fifteen days is kind of that first benchmark where we'll go back and have contact with them. A lot of those folks, matter of fact, that first week, that was a Friday, by the Monday following, several of those have been completely cleaned up. And some of them, obviously, it's vehicle related, some of the vehicles are either getting plated properly because they had expired registrations. So that does take a little bit of time because they still, a lot of the Secretary of State's, you're not just doing a walk-in visit, you gotta, you still gotta get an appointment to go in there and take care of that stuff.
Dan, you wanna go next?
Sure, most of my comments are related directly to old business and new business, so I can just wait until then.
Kenya?
Sure, I've had a quick question with the chief. Do we, do we typically send a letter first and then follow up?
Yeah, we typically, like, on that Friday when we went out, we were leaving letters at the door with some other detailed notes, kind of explaining not just, it's a rubbish violation, giving, a couple of locations had junk vehicles, but then they also had vehicle parts. So we would leave a note at the door explaining that if we weren't able to make direct contact. I mean, obviously, at several of those locations, we made direct contact with folks, but some of them, we had to leave letters.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just certainly like to have people follow code, but I like to do it in a respectful way.
Agreed.
And maybe next year, not do it right before the holiday.
Sure. We did give a, we did make a couple posts about...
I saw that. I know, but as you're getting ready for Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Perfect time to...
I know, I know. Not, not the best time to have to deal with something.
Not the best time for people to have junk in their yard anymore.
Right.
Pardon?
People shouldn't have the stuff in their yard in the first place.
Goes without saying.
It doesn't have anything to do with holidays.
Goes without saying, I get it, but we haven't really done that in years, Scott, so I would just like to not do it during the holidays. That's my personal preference, anyway.
Roger. I have nothing.
I just, I just have a follow-up question for Brandon. When you were, with the people that you did make contact with, and you said many of them have already cleaned up, was it a, was it a case they just didn't know? Because I guess I feel like a lot of, a lot of times, people are technically violating an ordinance, but they may not know that it exists, and so did you find that at all, or is it just, yeah, I know, but I'm doing it anyway?
So I was out on several of those calls, and the people that I actually had contact with, I mean, one lady's like, I've been telling my husband. I was, I got to be the, hey, you give your husband this letter, and she's like, I appreciate it because it'll make him do these things he's supposed to do. So I don't think there was anybody that I spoke to directly that was, that was unaware of the ordinances. Most of them were aware of it, and they said, I know, I need to, I need to get the plates renewed. You know, so it was, it was a kind of a reminder, not necessarily educating, just reminding them, like, if you have an expired plate, technically, it's a junk vehicle, if you drive it on the road and get pulled over, that, that could be, lead to a citation.
Could you, could you come back to me, because I had a question, but I got a message as well. I just wanted to wish everybody a safe and fun holiday, so emphasize the safe.
Yes, the GPW, I know it's probably a lot of work, but they could be doing other things, but downtown looked amazing Friday night for the walk. I read that there was money spent last year for more decorations. I thought the city looked fantastic, and I would say because of that, as I was driving in tonight, I think there are a lot more people in the community that are responding, and there seemed to be more lights out than what there had been in the past, so it looked great, and Stephanie at the chamber worked well with you guys, I don't know all you did, but it was fantastic, so I thought the city looked great Friday for that, and Saturday, and still, but...
Nice kickoff.
Just Friday, yeah.
Just Friday. That's it.
I got one thing, just kind of, I don't know if it's a comment or a question or whatever, but I just wondered, since we have a new city manager and now we have a new mayor, if there's any chances that we can get the BLT meeting especially, and maybe some of the other more important meetings moved to evenings instead of at noon? So maybe some people can attend to it, you know? I don't know if that's on, anything on anybody's agenda, but...
I think a good place to start is to, I'll, I'll send a survey out to everyone that sits on those boards and make sure they're able to make it in the evening, and then I'll report back if there's any issues with that.
I would prefer that too, but I'm happy enough, just that it's getting videoed now.
But no, I can, I can ask, you know, so long, I wanna get most things, if we can, if they're on, sit on the boards, and then that's the conversation we have when you get your recommendations to the council area, if you want to go on.
I don't know why the city council gets charged for videoing the BLT meeting, but it doesn't, you gotta put it somewhere, I guess, so. And since you requested it, and you were a council member, maybe that's why.
I hadn't said it to you.
I did notice that.
It's only a hundred fifty dollars once a quarter, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Next, I'm last. Christmas lights look amazing in town. I'm glad we did what we did. I would like to still continue down that route. I think we could still do a little more, a little longer. When I was a child in this town, we had lights that went all the way down to Main Street, and lights that went all the way down to city limits. Daniel, remember? All the, all the little displays on the, on the pole poles that went all the way to the city limits, and the bridge, and candy canes, and greens, and all that stuff. I would, I would still like to continue, little bit at a time, I mean, it's always good to add. One thing I'd still like to see is, I'd still like to see some kind of a display like the wonderful Santa and reindeer down there, something, something Christmasy at City Hall, seeing as though that should be a focal point of the city. Some kind of a little display of something there, here. The lights on the trees look great, but we still got a lot of room, and it'd be nice to put something up there. And I have ideas, so just get with me.
Is that it?
The guys are doing great with the leaves from, with the limitations that they've been given with vehicles. I had Dave Amai silk was coming by one day, and I had him suck the leaves up on the one side of my road, and I knew he was gonna be down at the end of the house, turned around, so the next load I put on the opposite side of the road, and he got those two. That way they didn't sit tight, yeah, but it worked. So you did a really good job. Kudos to them. I mean, it's long and tedious doing that every day, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. I would agree with the, the lights downtown. The city looks terrific. It's the best I've seen. And the tree lighting was really cool. There was a huge crowd for that. And I think a lot of that was probably because of the weather. We should get a megaphone that works, though. Stephanie said that that's kind of a tradition that works when they have their tree lighting in Montague, but it doesn't work here. Anyway. Last night, I attended the Scholastic Award Gathering at the high school and read the proclamation that the city issued, congratulating, acknowledging the kids' great academic accomplishments. There was over 200 students that have maintained a 3.3 average, and the auditorium was full. It was like standing room only. I also attended the senior Thanksgiving lunch today over at the senior center. It was a big gathering. I counted 76 people. The food was very good, and it was profuse. Almost all the food was prepared by Kristy. She worked really hard on those things. The last thing I had is, I saw a note in the paper, one of the papers, where Shelby got another $800,000 grant for roads. And it inspired me to talk with Kurt Vanderwal, our rep. He said that he would be happy to come in and meet with Dan. And so I was gonna work with you, and I guess anybody else too that wants to be involved in that, so I'm gonna talk with you this week and find out what day works, and see if we can't get him in here, and see if we can't get some money too. That's all I have. So next, we got public comment. Nobody interested in public comments tonight. Go on to old business, the West Colby Promenade, and that's what you wanted to talk about, right?
Yeah. So I understood that you wanted to see if we can add on to the pavilion at Goodrich Park additional bathrooms. I met the architect prior to the construction kickoff meeting, and he said it would prove pretty difficult because it's, there's been new billing codes that would be just additional cost. And then he just kind of ballparked on a nearly adjacent building, which is basically the same building we're gonna put at the West Colby Promenade, just next to the Goodrich Park building, really didn't solve any issues, and it still costed $2.20, and we lost the storage area. So I'm looking for council to make a decision on the bathroom at, with the West Colby Promenade, to keep or not.
I thought the way, at least in my mind, the way we looked at was that we were going to look into gutting the bathrooms at Goodrich Park and turning them into two separate unisex stalls.
Oh, that's, that can be done independently from the West Colby Promenade project if we're not expanding the building? I thought you wanted the building expanded.
No.
Oh, yeah, but that, that's simple. It's a, it's a few grade to take that stuff out. I don't know if it's gonna solve the issue of it being dark in there, you can add some lights, but it's just kind of a draft building, because it's block, and there isn't a whole lot of top windows.
Are there, are there any windows in?
There are. They're like vents.
Okay, yeah.
Probably, it's a metal roof, so you really couldn't put a skylight in.
There's gotta be some way to make those less creepy than they are now.
Paint them a lighter color and put in some LED lights.
And keep, I think a lot of it too is the humidity. It's so clammy in those, I don't know.
Like I said, I think, I think, I think we make them, like Scott and I talked about with the unisex, and just pull the, you know, put a toilet in each one and call it good. A toilet or an urinal in each one and call it good, and make them unisex bathrooms. I mean, you're not, now you're not playing the, you know, long lines at the one and the other real quick, so I mean, I think, I think that would be enough, and I, and I don't, for larger events, I mean, we always bring in Porter Johns anyways. They're cheap and easy enough to do that if that needs to happen, so.
If we turn them into two unisex stalls, then it won't need to leave, lose the closet. If we turn them into two unisex stalls, then it won't need to leave, lose the closet.
No, we could leave the closet.
The closet could still remain there.
Yeah, that's, that can be done anytime.
Yeah.
I thought that's the way we left it. Maybe that's just the way.
We're losing. We're losing two holes that way. I'm just making sure you're aware. Because there's two toilets in one and a urinal toilet in the other. We're going down with one on each.
I think, quite honestly, you never see a line out there anyways, only during the Fourth of July or some event that we have there. And we just, we just put it upon ourselves that if we have larger events and community gatherings and we just have somebody come in and drop a few, drop a few extra Porter Johns there. They aren't terrible price wise. I mean, it would cover, I mean, we'd put a handicap one and a couple of regular ones and depending on, I mean.
You could rent the trailers for.
Or you can rent, or you can rent a trailer, add those trailers and I always try to find those for us. They, yeah, they're really nice. I think you're still. But yeah, something like that. I mean, we could even look down the road and saying, yeah, if you're gonna have an event, anybody that's gonna have an event at that park with X amount of people, you need, you need to do this. I really hate to put unfunded mandates on people, but if you're gonna have a large event there and you think you're gonna overwhelm what we have, maybe it's time you need to, you know, hone up a little bit and get John dropped off or pay for John dropped off or something. I mean, if it's an event the city can pay for, if it's like Maritime Festival, I mean, we can figure that out. Harbor Light puts on a community picnic and the city, I think, is involved in that. Maybe they'll drop some extra resales.
That's the beginning of the.
I think, I think quite honestly for day to day, I don't think that a two hole or two bathrooms rule would be an issue.
Does staff have any recommendations for us?
What'd you see? What was that, Rod?
I ask if staff had recommendations.
DPW stance is more bathrooms the better?
The concern that I've heard, and I don't frequent those bathrooms, but the concerns I've heard are that they're dark and gross. So, but I haven't heard that the numbers are not enough. So I agree with you guys, I think having to renovate what's there with two unisex bathrooms and still keeping, still taking out the planned bathrooms for Goodrich, delete those. It would be good though to, you mentioned Dan, to go ahead and run the plumbing and whatever is needed over there. And that may be a good spot for the trailer bathrooms if we rent those. And I don't know if there's, if food trucks need water. I don't know if.
I don't either. I just don't want the generators running.
Yeah, that's, but power is important for that spot.
Yeah, but if we make that spot where trailers would, a bathroom trailer would go and actually have plumbing, I think that'd be fine.
Because the majority of those have all have internal tanks. They're built in with internal tanks and gray, gray water and clean water, the ones I've seen, so.
Now, why am I apprehensive to make a recommendation? Because this is council's vision of what downtown is gonna look like.
Understood, but we're making decisions that will impact staff. And staff is probably in a better position to guide us.
Well, staff doesn't normally use those bathrooms.
What's that?
We don't normally frequent those bathrooms.
However.
And really that's.
But you're, but you're responsible for the maintenance and you're seeing what's happening there.
And the recommendation I have from staff, I don't, I don't have a sort of opinion really yet, but I do trust DPW and their all four more bathrooms. But it is a hefty, hefty price.
Can anybody have any idea what it would cost to put a couple of holes in the brick so you could put windows in there?
I don't know. It's not insurmountable, though.
I think that would make a lot of difference. It would be, get some airflow through them and.
That can be done independent of the West Colby Park Promenade.
I think as we kind of refine the vision, it would be like to have a specific conversation with the guys who are going down there and see all the people down there to find out what the real need is now that we can't do what as easily as we thought we were going to do. So more specifics.
Yeah, somebody, what the problem is down there is a person, you know, just random general public will stuff stuff down the toilet and then it'd be not usable and it could be 15 minutes after the park's crew just went by there and then it's stuffed up for the day and all we get is, well, they're always gross. Yes, there's so many variables that I can't, you know. I could renovate those bathrooms. That's, that's not a big deal.
Tom? Have a comment? I think, yeah, I would agree with what seems to be coming out with, you know, just making those, how you suggested. If, if when there's the bigger events, we have enough facilities for people, because that's probably not enough. But, you know, when we do, you know, the June Arts and Crafts, there's always, you know, they bring them in and things like that. So I think, and I just think, I think there could be some things done. And I, and some of it is just quite old in there, you know? Maybe upgrade the insides to some degree.
No, it's like, you know, my theory was just gut it. I mean, you know, take each room, take everything out of it.
Start fresh.
One new, one new sit down toilet, a urinal, a new sink. Maybe even a, does baby changing.
Changing station.
Station. I mean, those things just kind of hang on. They don't take up any space unless you put it down.
And the other nice thing with the unisex is, is it makes it easier for the ADA stuff.
Yeah.
Because it's a larger, it's a larger unit. You're not trying to work somebody into a stall that, it's, the whole thing is a stall. So you're not.
I don't think those are ADA compliant.
No, no, but we, but we could. I mean, if you've got one big opening versus, versus, you know, you got a small stall and then you gotta put, you look at some of the other bathrooms and they always got a big stall and then a small one. This one is just, I mean, it's just like what Meyer has. They got the family, they call it the family restroom. That's what it is.
You don't even need a stall.
Nope.
Yeah, I like that idea of just cutting it. But also, I, you know, when you think about it, that's, that's one of our, that's one of our best parts because it's by the lake and things. And so I think, you know, I think improving that would be a good.
I remember the day we had a secondary restroom up where the swing in.
Pardon?
Remember that? They had that wood building up there, up where the Liberty Swing is. There was a, there was a wood building up there.
I remember a building.
That was the original bathroom.
That didn't even have any doors on it.
I don't remember that.
Yep.
Yep. It was my switchback, so.
Well, rehab the, into the bathroom said Goodrich. I still wanna run utilities to that same area. Just because I think water, having a sealed off sewage and electrical is necessary. And if worst comes to worst, we can put a, rent one of those, and it's $9.50 a week if we think it's heavy season. And there's mechanisms where you can actually count how often it's used, you know, without being intrusive or anything. And you can just judge the frequency on that. And if later, at a later date, we want to add the bathroom, we already have the utilities for it. That would save us money.
I mean, quite honestly, we buy a trailer. I mean, they're for sale. I mean, that's what we wanna do. We wanna have a big event down there. We pull the, take the trailer out of it from the DPW, drop it off and set it down there. Now you got extra bathrooms. They're not paying. Kurt's or somebody other than them to come and clean it if that's what we wanna do. They're shaking their head. I don't want a John.
That's a good idea.
It gives us, it gives us options. I mean, first, you know, see what's what. And we could put that anywhere. I mean, we could put it at Goodrich if they got a big event at funnel, you know, for, for the cruising. Pull it over to Funnel Field.
Good idea.
Would give us options.
The only issue that I would say with buying it is who's cleaning it then? And by renting it, they're cleaning it. By buying it, we would have to have somebody down there all the time.
No, I mean, it, just leave it out there until we needed it and then, yeah. Yeah, somebody will definitely have to clean it. They'll hire somebody to clean it.
That's a separate, separate bill, right?
Cleaning and maintenance and emptying and.
Yeah, no thanks.
I think rental sounds like a really.
I mean, yeah, rental works too. I'm happy to get away.
Before you say this, I'm gonna run one from my house.
Like I said, they are really, really nice.
Okay, no horse in case.
All right.
So can you have the direction that you, because this is not a vote or anything, is it? Or is it?
No, just me reporting back. I mean, what I heard was, do you want me to demolish the Goodrich Park Pavilion and build a new estate? Got it. Did I hear that wrong?
There was one more thing with the park.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah.
We talked about it last time and we voted to get rid of the big sun shade, the expensive one. What I wanted to come back is, I completely understood that. But we should, and I talked to Dan about this, look for something that does provide shade for the stage area. It doesn't have to be as elaborate. It doesn't have to be as much because, and I came in on late on that and I understood you had lots of conversations. But as someone who has been in that position, standing on a cement pad with no shade and the way it's terraced, if you just have a 10 by 10 tent, you can't see it. Because if you and I are standing there, no one can see our heads. So to look for something, and he and I talked about that, but just to kind of look for something in a different, a different light that would provide some shade there that could be put up in May and taken down in October where it's not coming up and down every time. We don't have to rely on somebody running over there.
Something similar to what we have with the splash pad.
Yes, the one, it's, it's, you know, it's got the shade, the water comes through it. Something like that that would provide shade for there, but not the, whatever the price tag was at 200.
$1.70.
$1.50 for that. Something, just something like that to add back to that for some shade.
I have to agree with that. I heard the same comments from a musician who's near and dear to me. So need some shade when you're playing.
I requested quotes from a few companies. I'm just waiting on them.
I know who made the one for the splash pad. Maybe they got something a little bit bigger, back in the splash pad to take it home. So I don't know.
Yeah, I was looking up bathroom remodeling and shade sales.
Be careful what you search for on the internet.
Yeah, don't do my searches. Inside bathrooms.
All right, we all done with old business then, I take it? On to new business. First up is Resolution 2538, which is signatures, authorized signatures.
I want to pass Resolution 2538 signatures.
Second. Any discussion?
Can we explain it just for folks in the audience?
Oh, sure. It has to do with authorized signatures, who in the city is authorized to sign checks or do banking and that sort of thing. And it is proposed that I be one of those and Jeff Holmstrom and that Steve Salter would, his authority would be removed. And then I think that leaves still probably Dan and Brenda. Is that correct?
Crystal.
Crystal.
Crystal, okay. So that's what that's about. It's the routine matter when there's change in personnel. I'll in favor of approval.
Philabri?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Mingan?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
All right, so that motion passes, authorized signatures. Next up is Resolution 2539, the leaf truck.
Yeah, this was a late add on. Apologize for that, but the leaf truck, so what, 24, we bought two and a half. Two of them were from 1987, one was 1997. And they keep breaking. And one of them, there's a hole in the engine now. And we're using that to make another one, so we're cannibalizing that one to get the other 1987 one running. And then they've been, there's usually one or two in the shop. So we looked at different options. I don't think keep throwing good money at a vehicle this old is a worthwhile investment. And this is something that I don't think we can ever stop doing now.
No, absolutely not.
Yet, what, you know, it's a really good service and people like it. So I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to continue, you know, obviously to continue. But we have to purchase it, I believe, to keep this going on a consistent manner. And we're extending it by two weeks already. We either need to buy a new truck or hire out. Hiring out is $1.50 an hour per unit. We usually, we count on two running. And I think I gave you the breakdown in my email. It's in the resolution.
Yeah, 86, 86 four for one.
Yeah, for one season.
For one truck for one season. Yeah, I thought that was one. Yeah, it's one truck, one season.
So that's 160.
Or we buy one for 286. Which they have different options where you can either lease it for five years, they call it a lease, but it's actually paying. Or you can do the same thing for three years. If we buy it outright, we save like 40 grand. We don't have to get billed in total.
I'll make a resolution to approve.
Motion.
A motion to approve Resolution 2539, purchase of the leaf mat. I'll second that.
Is this something that would be immediately available?
One week.
So.
Do we have the money for it?
We'll find the money if you have. So I talked to Don about this a little bit earlier. Our old contract, if I remember right, was $68,000 a year. And this, well, I mean, it's saving money. If you look at this truck, you take that, you take $70,000 and you multiply it times 20 years, which would be probably the usefulness of that truck, you're talking about $1.75 million we'd have paid another company. So this is, this is really good money frugality on our part to, and I don't know if one truck will be sufficient or down the road we'll have to get another one, but if we do, we're still saving money by utilizing our staff and not going out for contract. And like Dan said, if we got rid of, talking to people that don't have leaves removal, they gotta put them in sleek little brown bags and throw them somewhere or take them somewhere, it's miserable. We got it good, folks, in Whitehall with this leaf track system. I mean, we really do. And I think any one of us up here, we'd be strung up if we got rid of it.
The other, I also talked to Don, so we were bothering Don all day today. If we don't, if we order one, it's 12 to 14 months instead of getting it now. So we wouldn't even have it, if we don't do this with this one, we wouldn't have it for next fall. We'd still be breaking our own ordinance law with broken down trucks.
And they're, like, the crew is really doing lion's share, you know, obviously all the work because they're vibrating the entire time, so.
Will they, will they be, will they be able to use the current trucks at all? Are we just?
Oh, no, we'll still keep trying to keep them.
Yeah.
One of them we share with North Las Vegas.
Right.
So they're in a similar spot.
So they, so they bought the other two, right? I think they bought two, we bought two, and then we share one?
Yes.
Are they having the same issue or did we get the bad luck of the draw there? Just curious.
They are having the same issue.
Okay.
In one of their 1987s, they spent about $45,000 on it, revamping the suction system and a new auxiliary motor. Which our truck is in the same boat right now because it blew the motor. There's a hole in the side engine nut. So we'd be in the same boat with that truck. butt, so we'd be in the same boat with that truck. One white truck that we do have running, that's the newer truck, that one is worth putting a little bit more money into and making it a great truck. That's one that's been very reliable for us this season, more so than the other two. As I say that, it's sitting here, Twin Cities being worked on now. So it's, it's just, it's been a rough leaf season, and I think by making that truck, spending a little bit of money on the old truck and buying a new truck, I think will be in great shape for a couple of years to come.
Most trucks work.
They work hard.
And the other cool thing is by having the leaf truck, I mean, there are other options. Don and I talked about, I mean, there are other options about cleaning gutters and everything else you can use. I mean, people don't have to worry about, we got leaves that just collect on curbs. I mean, they can run it down there. They can use it at, use it at the cemetery, clean up the leaves at the cemetery once they get them all piled up. I think this is a good.
We happen to have a C D that's expiring on February first, that's two eighty-five.
Ain't that a good number?
Is there any way to get a legitimate cost when these new machines are sold? Is there any maintenance on it or anything? You know, it's still gonna break down sometime, probably.
Our new DPW director is a mechanic, so we utilize that as much as we can.
There will be some maintenance that goes along with it. There's a lot of moving parts on those trucks, but it does come with a two-year warranty. It's on a freight liner chassis, two-year unlimited miles, unlimited hour warranty, so the first two years should be fairly maintenance-free, the exception of, say, oil changes and air filter and, you know, that type of thing. As far as, as anything else goes, those trucks are used hard. It's, it's a lot of work on those trucks to do what we're doing, especially this time of year when it's wet and stuff's starting to freeze and we're continuing on, so. I mean, you can't guarantee that there's not gonna be some money that needs to be spent on in five years from now, but we hope not.
Now, we make sure that those are well-marked and lit up from the back and.
Absolutely.
Cross hatches and all that, light on the back.
Absolutely.
Arrow stick wouldn't be, wouldn't be a bad idea either, point the people how to go around it, because we all know how some drivers are.
Still won't fix it.
It won't, I know. It looks good, though.
They see those flashy lights and might drive past.
Yeah. The green one.
All right. Got a roll call vote here. All in favor?
Will you, one's go?
Yes.
Ninghan?
Yes.
Philibrand?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Next up is Ordinance twenty-one oh-two. I make a motion to approve the amended ordinance twenty-five oh-two.
A second.
I have a question for probably the chief.
Sure.
I don't know how it works right now, you know, but when we do get money for a ticket of anything. Where does, does the money go into the general fund or does it go back to the?
Ah, general fund. Yeah, any money can be taken, whether it's traffic records, whether it's, you know, tickets, goes to general.
I mean, I just, I don't really remember seeing anything about us ever getting any money from, you know, from the county.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's very.
It's heading into something, but.
Yes, yeah.
I just wondered, so this is gonna get us more money, basically.
Yes, yeah. If we continue to write the same amount of citations, we would, we would collect more money, you know, rather than a third of the citation, we would collect a hundred percent of it, even reducing the final.
I think it's a win-win, but it's.
It's a really good idea, in my opinion. I appreciate Brandon digging that up.
Would it be helpful just to let people know what we're talking about?
Sure, so right now.
Cause they don't have that information.
I think there are some.
There's memorandum out here.
Oh, good. We don't always have that, so I'd just like to bug the mayor to bug the city manager to.
I already did it. Thanks, Brandon.
But the long and short of it is, the, right now, if we write, we as a place write a ticket for a hundred twenty bucks, we get like forty-something back from that.
Cause we're asking for a court system.
Right, doing it this way and marking it local ordinance, we get a hundred percent of the proceeds and the driver doesn't get points under record.
And the fine is.
Whatever we, you said it to me.
That's right, the question. So Brandon, if there, if someone contests it, so you're gonna write the local, the local ticket?
Yep.
And they, they say, no, I, that's not, I wanna take it to court or whatever, does the fine change?
It would, because what would happen is that that ticket would have been written under district court, and it would be what the district court would assess for fines. So, yeah.
Which would be more.
It would be more, yeah.
I think it's a really good idea. I would, I wonder if we shouldn't charge a little bit more. You know, we're giving them a pretty big discount, which would hurt a little bit. They're not getting any points.
I think it's a good starting place, you know, if.
Brandon, any idea how this compares to the district court? So in, in kind of general terms, so like, obviously, you know, run stop signs, a hundred forty-dollar ticket, we're gonna, we're gonna charge it. Most of them are about a forty to sixty dollar reduction of what.
What district you're charging right now?
And it's very similar to like Roseville. They're charging a little bit more on some of their citations, but just like any of the violations that are obviously in the ordinance, they can be looked at on an annual basis and you folks can adjust those, obviously with some stat recommendation.
I think that's a good start.
So I guess the, all the questions I got is like the careless. You write somebody for careless, it's usually what, six points?
Correct.
Three now?
Always been three.
Is it, there's no, there's no points with this, or somebody, or would SOS still?
It's only, it's just like writing, writing a local parking ticket, Secretary of State does not see it.
It doesn't go, yeah.
But the option is still there.
It is.
So if we have a repeat offender. So you got a repeat offender, you write him under district versus local.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So it's just a, have another tool in the tool belt where we can, obviously, if it becomes somebody that's a problem, that we write.
Then you'll have history.
Yes.
History and stuff, so, yeah.
So you, we still would have a way to track a repeat offender, say.
Yes.
I mean, if you, somebody, every three weeks is getting pulled over for steam.
That's a problem, yeah.
Or pulled by a school bus.
Yeah, that's true. No, agree. Yeah, still track them, but we'll be able to know that.
Okay.
Have you been able to estimate how much the city would probably increase our income off this?
I, I have not. I could, I could go on poll and be rich for taking the last six months to get an idea, but I did not. Even then, I'm not saying officers don't, like, I think officers, whether conscious or not, might realize the auto insurance ramifications of writing somebody a ticket and that might deter them from writing, or this wouldn't. So it's, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna have good stats for a while, and plus we're going into winter, and there's just less driving. I think one-year stats would be a good place to reassess.
I do have one question. Is there additional time?
There will be for staff, so probably myself and probably actually at City Hall. I've already chatted with her a little bit about, you know, what it would entail, but it would be a little bit more time.
Okay, cause maybe we should track that for the first year just to see the offset, even though I like the idea, but we just leave the general estimate of the time.
Ready for a roll call vote?
Yes. Squires?
Yes.
Philibrand?
Yes.
Ninghan?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Cabala?
Yes.
So that passes. Next up is public comment.
Ryan Grigel, Coroner at Pitkin Drug, property manager for one-one East, one-one West, one-oh-five West and a one-oh-seven West Colby, and a partner in Harwood Platts Apartments as well. Roads, came up once tonight. Lake Street, so Lake Street, part of Lake Street is part of the West Michigan Pike or the Shoreline Trail, which runs from the border of Indiana, pretty much up to Luddington. It's called the West Michigan Pike Shoreline Trail. Here's a picture, I'll give it to Dan, that I took at the corner of Main and Lake Street. So a third of Lake Street is part of this shoreline trail, the West Michigan Pike. Not all Lake Street is bad. Lake Street is bad, in my opinion, from White Lake Drive to Main Street. From Main Street to the Railroad Trestle, it's not bad. From the Railroad Trestle to Napa, it's pretty bad again. Just approved, or you just approved, thank you for that, a new amphitheater. There's a brand-new apartment building there. It's probably one of our busiest streets. I could probably name six streets. I take it every day. You know, you got Mears, you got Lake Street, we could go on to Alice Street, Benson, you know, Sophia, a couple other ones, White Lake Drive. It's time to repave and fix it right. I'm asking you to please consider to make Lake Street a priority on your budget for next year. I know you're on a June budget or July budget, but you're gonna have, you got a new apartment building there, you're gonna have a new, you got a new amphitheater coming. That's a bad street right there. So please consider that, make it a priority if you could, Lake Street. By the way, I agree with your comments. Downtown does look great. Thank you for the lead pickup as well, so. So I'll leave this. My printer ran out of ink, but.
You know where, you know where the sign is.
Were you taking us driving?
Thanks for your comment.
Anyone else? All right, so the next line of business is that we're gonna go into closed session. So I move to go into closed session to discuss material exempt from disclosure under the attorney-client privilege, MCL fifteen dash two-four-three-one-G pursuant to MCL Section eight H of the open meeting. Any discussion? I had just wanted to tell, say for the people in the audience that as we go into closed session, we will be, whether we make any decisions or not, we won't be able to discuss it when we come out of closed session. So you're welcome to stay, but all, the only thing that'll happen when we're done with the closed session is that we will adjourn the meeting. So just so that you, you can stay if you'd like, but you won't learn anything more afterwards.